This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thanks everyone for hopping on Committee of the Whole, 22nd of July. I'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Lindsay, you have that? I have the deputy here with me, you can see that. No absence with regrets, any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can certainly declare at the time. Okay, approval of agenda, additions or deletions? So I have a couple of additions. Under 9A, doctor recruitment. Under 9B, council motions. 9C, crosswalk. Deputy, did you have one?
Yeah, I had one maybe, probably going to Lindsay. Jeff is getting the meeting organized for the... With myself, Daniel Allen, Gee Surratt, maybe Jeff, whatever staff people we need for the go-forward. Plan for Main Street.
Yep.
Yep, I'll put Main Street meeting. I have to do the same thing with the Mariners. Anybody else, any additions or deletions?
Yeah, I do.
Wade?
Thank you, worship.
I just need to call you all by your first name, I'll just, I'll get messed up if I don't. Okay, go ahead Wade, sorry.
No problem. I have a couple of motions for communities in Bloom that you can put together.
Okay, so I'll put you under 9E, communities in Bloom. Anybody else have an addition or deletion?
I've got a deletion, all of them, I haven't had any notice of them. Any of these things, are they in the package like CFest thing was last time around?
No, but this is Committee of the Whole, not Council. So...
So are we just gonna, so are we gonna go with no information, like written submissions or anything like that? Like we did with CFest thing, I mean CFest never even hit Committee of the Whole.
Nope, that's right. Which was wrong.
Just saying, folks, I wasn't stupid, but I, I had to shut up because I didn't have the stuff and I thought it was my fault. I didn't get it, nor did you guys, you voted on a motion without knowing what you were voting on. But we, we really screwed up on that one.
Yeah, we did, I, I agree a thousand percent.
And that's the only reason, listen guys, we gotta do it a little better than that. So what do we got, your worship? Is any of that stuff in a document form or is it all just bring it up?
I think we're just bringing it up. So if you're, if anybody's uncomfortable when they get brought up, we can certainly put them to the next Committee of the Whole.
Well, that's good, I know we're all on the same page and it's last time around. To be honest with you, I got frustrated because I thought I couldn't find it and I blamed it on myself and I got ugly. And just stopped talking and wouldn't vote on it because I didn't know what I was talking about frankly.
Yeah.
And the good news guys is I took that stuff and called Dave Warner and asked him the questions I wanted to ask him.
Good, CAO?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if there are motions from communities in Bloom, they are recommendations to Council, they don't need to come through Committee of the Whole, they're already through one advisory committee. So those items can go directly to Council.
All right, well, we can drop those then.
No, don't drop them, wait, I, I had my say, but listen, we didn't do well on that one last week. The CFest one.
No, what, what Jeff is saying is...
You don't need to have recommendations from one advisory committee go through another advisory committee before they go to Council. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, same as like planning advisory, all those. So Wade, do you want me to keep them on or take them off, it's up to you.
Take them off, take them off, let's move on.
All right, anybody else, any additions or deletions? Good, okay, can I have a motion, please?
So, second.
Moved by deputy, second by councillor Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
On Terry, motion carried, thank you. Okay, staff report, CAO report.
Your worship, the report was attached to the agenda, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them now. Or at your convenience.
I'll start, I'll start, they're quick ones. So with regard to the MHL request, I should have looked, but I didn't. Do I have that letter and we're waiting for me to look at that letter?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize on that one. The Committee of the Whole, that council refer ATV use on Water Street to the Police Advisory. Councillor Steve, Councillor Cliff and myself were at the Police Advisory this morning. I was hoping to have something from the province on that and we haven't got it yet. So the, just as a way of an update, the Police Advisory Committee will put together a letter that outlines, that basically covers all the bases and, and says that, you know, there is support from the town and the RCMP. Just, just by way of a letter to send to the province on that, but I'm still making the phone calls to TIR. I've actually got texts and phone calls and everything else in right now. So I just wanted to update that. And, were you gonna say something councillor Jim?
When you send that formal letter to the province, whichever department, would you please put a deadline on it? We've been talking about this for years, it seems, and, and I just think it's so easy to do. And I know that we could be in trouble with the banning of election signs. Why don't we just work with our local staff and just open up Water Street tomorrow? Sort of thing.
Because it's illegal, that's why, but that's, but I'm with you.
I know it's illegal, but...
And the letter's going from the committee, I think.
Can't hear you Cliff. You're, you're on, you're on, I just couldn't hear you.
The, the letter's going from the committee, not going from Council.
Yes. Yeah.
So Jim, you know, it's not like we can change the letter, we agreed in the committee what to send and everybody on the committee was gonna sign it.
Yeah, but, but I think what he's saying is, could we put a deadline on that?
On the, on the decision?
Look for a response, for, you know...
Response, yeah.
It'll get you a no quicker and it'll get you a yes probably.
Okay, appreciate that, I appreciate that Cliff, I'm okay.
Yeah. Okay, and the next one is that the paint skate park. So councillor Steve and the CAO were, like where are we on that to get the skate park painted? Steve or Jeff?
I'll let Steve speak to that.
There's a group of five or six that we had met with a few times. I've been in contact with Jalen over the last little bit and basically we were just hoping that we had a, a week or two of good things kinda down at the park so we could kinda present it as a, almost like a, you know, here's your reward type deal, moving forward in it type deal. But we're hoping to meet maybe sometime next week and just have a discussion about how we move forward from there. So I hope to have something more concrete when we meet next time.
Great, thanks.
Great.
Uh, hang on one second.
More kids using that skateboard board than I've ever seen, so you're doing something good.
Yeah, I think they feel safer with, with, with him there.
Yeah, that was a great hire by Frank, I think, and, you know, looking out, having someone who's, who's been there since the beginning, someone from the town and someone who's really helping the kids, I hear it from the Yakro people, I hear it from parents all the time. Jalen's not just there looking out, he's actually like participating, helping kids, first aid I heard. Just even inside and outside after hours, I, I just think that was overall a great hire. I think it's, it's not hard to drive by and see the benefits.
Yeah, right on, okay, good on that one. Okay, and, and then the, the next one is direct staff to develop the concept for the redevelopment of Collin Street. And it's, it's the suggestion here is to refer to capital budget. Where, did we do that?
We didn't allocate anything for that, no.
Okay, so we're good on that one for now?
For now.
Do you need us to do anything?
You can, you can pass a motion to, to refer to the capital budget and I'll make sure that Jerry has that and we'll consider it next year, I guess next spring. But our capital, capital program, as you can tell, is, is fairly busy and, and ultimately we did a, we need a short-term fix on that. And it does, it does deserve a longer-term vision and rework. Just, you know, we're, there are, there are a lot of things, so absolutely refer to capital.
Okay, because we don't have to do any, we can refer to capital but not do anything if we choose to push it.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So my recollection on that one, your worship, was that we, I concur with what Jeff says, we, we took it out of the budget deliberately. But I think Jeff, we said something about there would be enough funds to do the design, whatever, to, something like, did we not say something like that?
I don't recall. I don't recall.
You know, I don't think it was a very complicated design thing, maybe it's a relatively modest amount of money to spend on whatever needs to be done there to, before we set.
Yeah.
Anyway, leave it at that, I thought...
Yeah, it sounds familiar, sounds familiar.
Yeah, Phil is, Phil's here saying Cliff is...
Yeah, hit it right on the head, perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks guys.
Okay, and then the, the last one was the, the lights, the outside court lights at South Centennial School. I don't know why I thought that was already done, but it could be way up, something happened to that piece.
So Frank may be able to chime in on this, but I think, I think we, we started and made some inquiries through either Frank or Todd with the contractor to get an estimate. And I think the contractor ended up putting his time or effort into lights at, at South Playground as opposed to South Centennial. So I think the last time I talked to Frank, and he's on here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last time we talked, we were going to reboot that with the contractor to, to get that estimate on the playground. Do I have that right?
Exactly right, I think Todd had it on his list of things to do. And Chad, Chad had made a recommendation that possibly looking at another contractor to consult with.
Okay, thanks Frank, I knew we, I knew we started something, I just didn't realize if we finished or not, so. That's all my questions, anybody have questions for CAO? Good, Fire Department report. Jeff, can you maybe just give us a, I think we're doing those updates anyway from Mark? With regard to the structure.
Yeah, the capital project is, is a, is a separate issue, but as far as the, the department goes, as you know, we're still searching for a, a chief and that process is ongoing and active. The, as far as other matters within the department go, I would say our volunteer numbers are, are steady. We need to, need to work on that. And that's a big part of the reason why we're, why we're working on the fire hall itself is to provide amenities to the volunteers to be able to have a level of morale and, and sense of belonging that will keep them, keep them engaged, so.
Phil has a question on the fire truck.
Jeff, we, I know when the former chief was here, there was a truck that didn't, didn't pass, I guess, what we required. Do we hear, hear anything on the replacement for that?
Oh, I remember that.
Well, you caught me there, sorry, I, I was gonna say, I was gonna say...
Or did he put it back Jeff? Or did he make another recommendation about when another piece of equipment was coming? I was gonna say come and do it, but coming to the end of life, that he was gonna replace that piece of equipment with something else. I, I'd just like to know that, that's all.
Yeah, I can get you that story as far as where we are with that, but we had, I thought, I'm going from memory, it's been a while since we've talked about it. But I was thinking that we awarded a tender for a heavy rescue and I was thinking we received it, but as you were asking the question, but now you got me second guessing if we received it or not.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about the receiving part, that's all.
Okay, all right, so it's almost a one-year build to do one of those trucks, but...
Yeah, I think, actually I thought the fire chief said it could have been anywhere from 12 to 16 months.
Okay, so let me, let me follow up on that for, for you.
Thank you.
Good, any more questions about fire folks? Good, operational services, Chad, I think Chad's off, but if anybody has any que, I have one question. I'm full of questions today. So we have a new wooden bench that's been painted with the colors of the Pan African flag. So staff's just awaiting direction, so I'm thinking I'll, I'll reach out to Steve, Vanessa maybe, should it be? Just reach out and, because I'd love to do something around that. Even though it's COVID, if we can social distance and so is there, I'll talk to, I'll talk to her about maybe a place. Put the three of us on a call and figure out a, a spot for that. Anybody has any suggestions, maybe send them, send them to me. But otherwise we'll do a little bit of an event around that, like we did with the, with the pride one.
Worship, the recommend, yeah.
Go ahead.
Recommendations, staff is awaiting direction for a suitable location to install the bench.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, does anybody have preferences to where they would like to have it?
I think you should talk to the people that are concerned, like you suggested.
Yeah, that's, so that's what I'm gonna do. And we'll do a little bit of an event around that. And the other piece, I think I mentioned it at the council meeting. So I'll work with Melanie at First Nations and get a bench or picnic table, same thing, in their colors. And get that done as well, so, so I'm glad to see that. Any questions on the operational services report? Go ahead.
I noticed under compost facility that staff has received five retail, retailer or vendors for permits to sell. Have we actually been selling it to those five or selling a compostable product?
No, it's, so what that is, is we, I'm just opening his report here to be sure I'm, I'm speaking correctly, but I believe what Chad was referring to there was the, the fact we changed our solid waste bylaw requiring anybody looking to sell a product as compostable or biodegradable that is not a food product, required a permit from the town of Yarmouth. And so a number, a number of retailers, Waste Check did a great job in assisting us here, getting the message, message out to retailers. Some retailers immediately pulled products off the shelf and, and made application for, for permits. So we're in the process of, of, I guess, getting inundated with, with requests for, you know, a couple dozen SKUs in some cases. And I think what, what we're gonna have to do is, and I suggested to Chad, is that we receive samples of these products. Because the first issue that we have with our system is that the first two stage gates, the first two opportunities to keep plastic out of the compost are by visual inspection. So when the, when the hauler flips open the, the green cart and sees what is in it, if they see something that looks like plastic, they should close the lid, put a sticker on it and move on. Now, if you have a biodegradable or compostable product that looks like plastic, then you could have your cart rejected. And so that is, that is not a product that we should give a permit to because it's gonna create confusion for the hauler. The second stage is once the stuff is brought to the compost facility and dumped on the floor, it then is, there's a visual inspection on the floor and over conveyor belt. If our employees have to try to differentiate between a product that looks plastic but is biodegradable from one that looks like plastic and is plastic, then they're gonna, it's gonna cause a lot of time and most likely the biodegradable or compostable product is gonna get picked out and removed from the compost stream and put into the garbage and never actually reach the intended purpose. So if the product cannot be differentiated visually by the hauler and by our staff, it is a waste of time and money and we should not accept it into our, into our stream. And so that is, that is where we are, is Chad has, has got lots of requests, but he has to actually have product in his hand to, to decide if in fact it's, it's, it's gonna get confused with plastic when it hits the entire kitchen floor. So, so that process is gonna take a little bit of time, but Waste Check is, has offered their assistance and Chad has taken them up on it in terms of engaging the retailers and we'll see where it goes. Hopefully there will be some products that, that are, you know, visually different from, from plastic and can be easily determined or differentiated.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good, any more questions? Good?
Just one more question, the transit system, the transit system. Two people saw me today on the street upset with the fact they have to wear masks to get on the, to get on the bus.
They're gonna be wearing it when they're shopping next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
Get on the bus without a mask.
Yeah, that's a, that's a provincial law and, and I think it's an important one and I think it's a sign of things to come. And, you know, it's changed, so I expect there'll be a certain amount of, you know, adjustment that people will need to make.
So to that point Jeff, yesterday, Remo meeting, there was a website or a link, the email that we could go to to get PPE. Was that with, in response to this, because Jenin was talking about transit and the recent, recent announcements?
Yep.
So maybe, I mean, I don't know what we need, but if we can get, you know, free masks and hand them out on the bus for the first two weeks or whatever. I, I don't know if we can, but...
Well, we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask and the intention, the intention won't be, don't bother bringing your, your mask, we have them. It will be more that, you know, we will have some masks on, available to us, whatever the province will afford us. And we'll ask people and advise people they're required to wear, wear masks. We prefer not to have people left at the curb, so if somebody's there and they don't have a mask, we'll have a, a mask to be able to offer them. If they simply refuse to wear a mask, well, that's a different issue. That's making a choice at the curb whether or not you want to take transit. You know, we have conditions for riding the bus, one of them is financial, you must, you must pay. And the other one is public health and this is a public health measure mandated by the province. And if you're gonna use this service, I think you need to respect the rules and it will help people to do that.
And, yeah, exactly that last line, that we have to help people protect each other.
Yep.
Throw the mask. Are you good with that councillor Jim? Good stuff, any more questions on this one? Okay, planning department, any questions on that one? Okay, asset management and infrastructure, Mark's not here, but... Mario's here.
Apparently he's on, he's on the town jet engine.
I just saw you there bud, I didn't see you before. So any questions on asset management or infrastructure renewal? Okay, finance. Jerry's not here, but are we good? Jim, did you have a question?
Oh, who's this?
No.
Oh, look at this.
We're gonna picture it.
It was Cliff's granddaughter.
Oh, okay, good.
Any, any questions on finance?
You're muted Cliff.
Hi, your worship.
Yes.
We haven't seen her in six months and Joan hasn't seen her since she was sick, so happy moment.
Very good.
Good, good for you Cliff.
Yes.
Just, I'd like to ask my updates on the, on how we stand with the collection of our municipal taxes, that's all. Are we still in line and I know Jerry's not there, Jeff, but I...
So we, we were watching very closely for the, the deadline at June 1st because that's where the taxes were due. And at that point, as Jerry reported last month, we were slightly ahead of where we had been in the past. I haven't asked him for an update since then because, you know, we, that was the point that, which we were, we were caused a little bit of stress. So we can follow up, but Jerry's back next week and we can get an update in time for the council meeting.
I was just thinking of, like, I know I'm not, I shouldn't inquire, but about big business like Rod Grand Hotel, Rod's Colony and that, I just concerned about, they have such an impact in town and I just hope that they're gonna be okay. Anyway, thank you very much Pam and Jeff.
To that point, your worship, Jerry did inform us that all except, that the taxes were up to date with the exception of some of the motels, those are the words he uses, I recall.
Yeah. Good, any more questions on finance? Yarmouth Recreation, Frank is on. Any questions for Frank? I gotta say this, I love that there's gonna be online registration and E-transfers. 2020, man. I love it.
We've been stuck in 1995 for a long time, so it's, it's going super smooth with the online registration. I say super smooth, but the payments have been very smooth. It's the software that we get, that we're having a few issues with, that we're getting some information, not all information. We have to dig for it a little bit, but I think that's just a, a program update that we need with the, the company that does the behind-the-scenes work, so all good.
Good, I tried to fill in the survey there, but it had all of the different payments and it had checks too and I would never check off a check.
What's a check?
Chasing a bad check is, is worse than anything, I think, but anyway, it's good, good stuff. Any more questions for Frank?
Good, good report.
Yeah, good stuff. Economic development, Natalie is on. Questions for Natalie? I do have one, actually it might be under the, I'll ask it under request for decision for the murals. Any questions for Natalie on anything folks? Good?
No, we're good.
Okay.
She's a busy, she's a busy girl.
Sure is. Okay, so we're down to business, tender results, Ferry Terminal Work Package number three, do you wanna take these Jeff?
Sure, so tender was posted on the Nova Scotia procurement site, June 26th, tender closed on July 16th. We had one compliant bid received and the bidder was RCS Construction. The amount bid was 2.84, or, sorry, 2 million 804,000, $56.80. So it's a unit price contract consisting of steel piles, concrete foundations, miscellaneous underground site services for the new Bay Fairies Limited ticket booths, CBSA pill booths, canopy, Stevenore Building and abutment for the new Wharf Bridge. It was a complex project and the industry is busy resulting in one bid. However, the pre-tender estimate was within 9%, which the engineer feels is excellent for a heavy civil project tendered late in the construction season. So the construction of the new Wharf Bridge is not included in phase one and it's their intention to delete this foundation component from the contractor's scope, saving 275,554.39. The consultant has reviewed the bid and has confirmed it is compliant and there are no unbalanced unit prices. CBSA, CBCL has recommended the award, so our town engineer is recommending the award to RCS Construction as outlined above.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
I have a question too.
You're right.
And I don't, I, I'm not a get in the weeds person because I don't, this is not my work. But you know how when you call an electrician or a plumber, you have to pay a fee and then pay the fee for work on top of that? So when you take out that 275,000, is it gonna cost us more for somebody to come back and do it? When it has to be done? I assume the answer is no, because Mark would have seen that.
Yeah, so, so that element is, is a completely distinct element from all the other elements in here and it's simply deleting that scope because the bridge is not part of, of the work and so why, I, I think I have this right to Mario, correct me if I'm wrong, but why do the, the abutment if you're not gonna do the bridge? And save that, save that for a later, a later package, which may require later funding.
So, your worship, really the word saving in there is a misnomer. It would more properly have been to have said reducing the contractor's scope by the amount of, the contract price by 275 because someday we're gonna have to spend that money.
That's what I'm saying. And, and when you spend, when you pay that money in the future, does it cost more for them to come back?
So it isn't, so your worship, it isn't a case of... So it isn't. So your worship, it isn't a case of why don't we spend it now because it will cost us more in the future? Is that there are there are priority items that will make a difference in in the nine million dollar package? And what what Mark is suggesting here is let's not spend this two seventy-five because it's not going to actually lead to making a difference in in the short term, where we could spend that money in in the next phase of work and it will actually make a difference. So it's a matter of prioritizing.
Right on.
Right.
So and thanks for that. And I wasn't, just so we're clear, I wasn't in any way saying we should or shouldn't. I just didn't know how it worked.
Yep. So so in some cases, and you'll recall, for instance, the heat recovery work at Mariner Center. It's a distinct project, and if you do it today, it will cost you less than it will cost you in five years. And if you have that money and you have no other needs for it, why not spend it? In this case, there are so many other needs that will have greater benefit because just doing this piece is not going to bring about any immediate benefit.
Right on. Okay, Counselor Jim?
Just back in the preceding paragraph, this was a complex project and or however, the pretender estimate was within nine percent of the budget tender project. Is that over over the budget?
Yes.
Thank you. That's I thought that was the case.
Exactly. So that's part of the reason, I believe, for the thinking of removing the two seventy-five element is it brings it back where where we would like to have it. So the bottom line number is two point five million. And and so that allows us to do the other things as as I explained, the other things that will be impactful in the short term.
Good. So we're looking for a motion, your worship?
For the two point five, right, Jeff?
Two point eight.
No, it's the two point five at the bottom.
Two point five, yeah, I see, yeah.
I say just.
I see it.
Yeah. Okay, so moved by Counselor Jim. Second by deputy. Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Contrary? Jeff, are you gonna say something?
After you finish that.
Yeah, motion carried.
Okay, so your worship, if we could have an emergency, I'll say, emergency council meeting following this to ratify that decision, then we can go ahead and award that and and get the work going.
Perfect. All right. And the next one is tender results, sewer flushing, cleaning and video inspection.
Okay, now, trying to get. Sorry, just a moment.
Want Phil to run it in?
Okay, I've got it now. I've got it now. So I was trying, I'll explain later, but. So we have a recommendation here from the manager of Public Works regarding our our annual sewer flushing, vacuum cleaning and video inspection program. And so three responses were received and they're summarized in the manager's report. After reviewing the tenders, it's recommended that the contract be awarded to the lowest overall tenderer, Loomer Loomer's Pumping Service. And the numbers are there for your reference, and that is for your information and approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation, staff.
Second.
Counselor Cliff, who seconded that? Counselor Don? Okay. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision. Oh, sorry, CAO?
Just again. Thank you.
Okay. Request for decision mural program guidelines. Okay, so Natalie's on. I have a couple of questions, Natalie, if you're okay with that.
Sure, yeah.
So so I see a lot, this is done through the facade program. Remember, we had a brief discussion around the facade society. Did we, do I remember us saying that when we do our next batch of committees that we will take a look at the facade society as well?
Um, maybe in the context of their, in the context of their bylaws and membership?
Yeah, like like are the same people on and do we need to give other people an opportunity?
So separate to this request for decision, the society is working on setting an AGM date. And part of that, in preparation of that, is they're increasing their membership from seven to eleven. And they're going to be advertising for positions. So we'll be working with Mike to communicate that out to the public.
Okay, great.
I believe they are going to form their own nomination committee for that. I've put together some roles and responsibilities for the executive board that they're considering, and they're updating their bylaws. So I I hope that answers your question.
It it does. Thank you very much. And and hopefully, because we're doing this mural grant, there will be people that understand that and put their names forward. So the other question is page three. So page three, number nine, insurance. Who's providing proof of insurance? Is it? Is it the building owner or is it the the artist?
Um, so typically, it would be the applicant that could be the artist. Or it could be the property owner, it could be the business. So that's to really cover, like when you're using scaffolding, if the if the mural happened to be on a wall. Have to cover in case of liability, accident, et cetera.
Okay, because I, when I read it, I I would kind of bounce back and forth between the applicant and the building owner. So I couldn't figure out who was who's applying, who actually applies. So you're saying either one could apply.
Right. So the way that we structured it is that an applicant could be an artist with the permission of the property owner. It could be the property owner, or it could be the business owner in that building with permission from the owner. So it provides a wide spectrum of people that could apply.
Okay, right on. And then and then I had a question on the timeline. And then you answered it on the next page, ability for the project to be completed within the timeline required. So they will set that out like clearly so that somebody's not starting a project and finishing it two two years later?
Right. So the concept, this this program is not similar to the facade program in the sense it's by application, so it will be an open call. So as an example, the facade society might advertise in an open call for mural grant applications in the fall. They will give a couple of months for applicants to submit their applications with all of the requirements to be eligible. And then there'll be the juring selection process. It'll be presented to committee of the whole. And then the awarded applicants would have a fixed period of time to complete their project.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, sorry for all the questions, Bud.
Oh, no.
I love this one. I love it. So who makes decisions? I read it all the way up to page six, and then it says that the facade society art professionals with mural experience and the Tanya Yarmouth staff. I I read somewhere in the previous six pages, something comes to council. What comes to council?
That's just, we will present to council the applications.
Okay, gotcha. You're sending the.
So the designs, the designs that are submitted will be presented at committee of the whole.
Gotcha. So we'll get.
Final decisions are made by the selection committee.
Okay, but but committee of the whole, council is going to be able to say, not this.
We will take that into consideration, but as per the last committee of the whole, it was highly suggested no elected elected officials to participate in the jury.
Okay, I remember. I remember that now.
This was the way to get your cake and eat it too.
This is it. Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry for all the questions, Bud.
Oh, no, I appreciate.
Love this one. Any questions for Natalie? Jim?
Natalie, I see where we're increasing the number in the committee from seven to eleven. So and because of the mural concept, that means when you have a meeting, you're going to, you're going to have to have a quorum of six to have a meeting. And one of my thoughts were to get around that, just because sometimes it's hard to get a quorum, is that maybe there could be a, I thought about just having a subcommittee with a member of the current committee with people who are active in the art world to make to make a recommendation, et cetera. And the and the other and the other thought I had, as I went through the process here, the number of pages. If I'm an owner of a of a business, the process is is really quite, there's there's like twelve or thirteen pages and the application needs. So if I'm interested and I go through the application process, as you have presented, I'm going to say, oh, my God, I don't think I'm interested. It's too involved, too too detailed. Is there a way that we can have a one pager that can be somehow promoted through our communications officer and and so that a person could, if he's interested or business is interested or artist is interested, he could come and meet with the committee or a member of the committee and go over the process in in more detail so that it becomes easier to fill out an application. It just, it just looks quite involved at this point. And I realize that we're dotting all the i's and crossing the t's. But if there was a one pager that contained the essence of the program and we could just go through the process, because in essence, as I recall, that's how I did my own mural on Elma Square and even the mural on John Street way back in the early eighties. So you just, you just.
For marketing, for marketing the program and communications the program, I totally agree. There will be, you know, that'll be a couple of paragraphs. But for the the guidelines and the application, it requires that level of detail because this is a serious project with serious money that requires a five-year post-project maintenance. These could be murals that are in very public places, and if it's not taken seriously, we could end up with no ability to enforce it within our bylaws. So yes, that's why it's, and it's the same level of detail, actually less than I've seen at other programs administered by communities.
Sure. I'm generally okay with it. Go ahead, Cliff.
So I'm reading the last paragraph on five and six. And I think if you read that, you'll have answers or questions to your answers. The mural grant fund is managed by the Yarmouth Facade Society.
Yeah.
Mural grants will be awarded through an open competition. And then who makes the decisions? Your application will be considered by a subcommittee composed of members of the Yarmouth Facade Society art professionals with mural experience, the town and Town of Yarmouth staff. There's no reference here of it coming to council, but I see.
No, but there was, there was in the previous pages, and I couldn't find it.
Well, then you're in conflict. You got contradictory. You see, who makes the decisions? Your application will be considered, and the other part is the mural grant is managed by, and funding up to five thousand requested through the program can be used to cover costs, so on. And payment, Yarmouth Facade Society will issue grant money by check in installments. So who's who's looking after our money on this besides the society? I mean, if you think that the society should have, it's pretty much up to them.
It is.
Yeah.
It is. It's administered and the money, the funds that are granted to them by town council are managed by them. As a courtesy, society will present at the committee of the whole the applications and designs, but it will not be required of council to make the final selection. That's just a courtesy.
So Nat, so Natalie. Yeah, to Cliff's point, that that's what I was saying, that when I read what he just read, I said, wait a minute, I remember it saying it's coming to council, but it was that committee of the whole, but we aren't deciding. That's all.
Right.
Yeah, so that's good.
Right.
Okay. Good. Any more questions for Natalie? Good? All right.
Do we make a recommendation? Do we make a recommendation, your worship? Or just do it?
Yeah, you can make the, yeah.
It's a, it's a request from, it's a request for decision on page one of the.
Yeah.
Do you recommend?
In that motion? To recommend that town council adopt the mural grant program guideline and funding application to be administered by the Yarmouth Facade Society. Are you making that motion?
Jim? I can, if you want.
Second. I'll second it, your worship.
Okay, good.
Okay, Counselor Wade? You good? All those in favor? Oh, do you want to speak, Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, request for decision council information technology. Go ahead, CAO.
So your worship, since since two thousand and twelve, after two generations of counselors being provided with laptops to do their electronic business, we went to a a model where counselors supply their own technology to participate in in these meetings and and to access their online documents and so on. In, you know, looking forward, I guess, and and having experienced this 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 last few months with the 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 virtual meetings and anticipating the future with hybrid meetings where some people are in this room and some people are are connected remotely. You know, I've been thinking through both the technology in terms of the hardware as well as the software, and how to integrate a in-person meeting to make it as effective as as this virtual meeting. I think, given the the folks that we have now doing our IT support, I feel it would be prudent for council to swing back to a model where the Town of Yarmouth provides your laptop that is your primary tool for doing your council business, and that would be supported by our IT support people that we've had on contract now for just a few months, but they're doing very good work. I think that would allow us to to deliver some changes that you're going to experience. We anticipate you're going to experience in the in-person meetings if they are hybrid in terms of how we connect everybody and making sure that we have consistent technology that works well. We're also looking at the 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 system that delivers your agenda and your and your council packages and so on to ensure, I guess, the best the best experience possible. I'd like to implement that change with the new council. Hopefully, I know all of you won't be there, but hopefully, most of you will be there in time for November first, two thousand and twenty. So your worship, if there are any questions about that or what what I'm thinking around this, I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Okay, questions for the CAO? Go ahead, Counselor Jim.
Jeff, I understand that in speaking with the group in Bridgewater, is it, that they're not really Apple, Apple product fans. And so I'm curious as to as to what they would be providing, or is that already agreed?
So my my, your worship, if I may, my my discussion with them about about this, what they recommended was that we not not give you a computer that will frustrate you, that we give you, not that an Apple product would for sure, but to give you a business Windows, Windows business laptop, so something that's fairly robust and able to deliver with ease and with stability the 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 service. So a great Wi-Fi connector, great quality camera and so on, and very stable platform. And I spoke to them this week about it. They've just ordered forty forty laptops for their various customers in anticipation of of the election and refresh in other municipalities. And so I'm hoping that we can we can jump on and and order some more.
Good. Counselor Wade?
Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, don't get me wrong.
Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, don't get me wrong. I'm just thinking about myself in a purely selfish way and thinking to myself, I have a company uh laptop right now. I have a personal laptop. I have a personal desktop. And this is just going to add to the mess in the house and Kathy's going to kill me uh because that's that's three laptops that I have to keep straight plus a desktop. Isn't there any way to integrate this stuff just into what I already have?
There is, um, you know, but the the so the issue that I'm anticipating is is a couple of things. One is is that we want the experience to be to be good for everyone, um, you know, good for for you as as the user of your equipment, but good for the people on the other end as well. And so a laptop, um, you know, that that is of good quality that we can support. I'm thinking that we can have meetings where we can expect uh not to have technical issues. And, you know, I mean, some of us have tried using phones on these meetings and tablets and uh multiple devices, some that lay flat on desktops, and the experience is not is not everything it could be. And so uh without saying to everybody, go out and get yourself a current laptop that can handle the video streaming and you'll have this have the video card that's that's capable of of supporting this uh adequately and and you'll be up to date on all of the security. Um, you know, the I, rather than telling you, you have to go out and do that, I thought it would be easier to supply it by the town and have it supported by the town so that uh the experience was 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 good for all. I I sympathize with your um, your sentiment there. I I know uh one fellow that works for the town was carrying three cell phones at one time uh because he had cell phones for different for different purposes and was keeping them separate. Uh, but you can imagine carrying three cell phones around in your pocket like that's that's not exactly uh what I'd want to do. Uh, what I would encourage you is is and what part of what I'm thinking is if we give you a town of Yarmouth laptop, I hope that you'll use it only for your town of Yarmouth business, um, because it is um, it is subject to to FOIPOP, right? And I think you have aspects of your personal life that you would not want to be um, um, you know, subject to some some review or or uh search for for documents, um, you know, your personal life's your personal life. Um, when you when you do your council business on a personal laptop, so there's there's a question of whether or not there are public documents, and there would be public documents on that laptop. And so if we're in, uh, and Cliff could speak to this, but if we're in in document discovery for a for a lawsuit, but would we have to be sure that on all of your personal devices, there are any relevant documents are produced? Uh, how do we do that? Uh, on a FOIPOP, we've got to ask you, you know, are the documents on on all of your personal devices? What I'd prefer is that we have devices that are town of Yarmouth devices and all of your documents related to your council business are on those those machines and and not any of your other, um, you know, involvement with your work or with your personal life.
Yep, that actually that makes perfect sense. That's the answer I was looking for. And when you when you mention the the uh the actual security issues, then it makes much more sense. I can keep everything separate and not have to worry about where everything is. So, okay, you've you've convinced me.
Okay, so just on that, you know, the 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 security, the security is 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 a whole other thing, right? Like, uh, you know, if, you know, we will keep your town of Yarmouth laptop as secure as we can through the through the tools that we will be using with the joint services board. But do we do we the town want to be um responsible in a way for protecting your your personal life that you might be carrying partly on on that computer? I think it's best, we're all best if we keep things separate and compartmentalized.
Yeah, that works for me.
And I got this. Go ahead. It works for me too, Jeff. I understand. I think I've always understood, but it's just as Wade mentioned earlier, my gosh, when you have, he has three now, soon to have four maybe. Oh, my God, I had two and I thought that was one too many. So so anyway, so if uh if I'm lucky enough or fortunate to be back in November, then I'll I'll adapt to the change. You may have to give me an extra pill, but I'll make it.
Cliff, you good?
Well, I got I got the same problem. I, you know, we get a an honorarium of five hundred dollars a year and I spend all that and more just to get myself up to speed and it's taken me the whole four years to figure this stuff out. And I just got to figure it out and I'm just, if I got to go to another goddamn operating, god darned operating system, it means, oh, there we go again. Um, I've I've got the same problem Wade's Wade's got because I I'm still in business and I've got two two computers there. I'm sitting in front of two two brand-new, one laptop, one a tower here. I've got these on here. I'm I'm cooking with gas. I got a tablet downstairs that I take to the council meetings. I done my bit. I spent your money doing it. Now we're gonna spend some more.
Yeah.
Well, no, yes and no, because um it's for the next council and the next council would get five hundred dollars. So we just take that money and apply it towards this. Am I right, Jeff?
Well, we would, what the proposal is, is that you would cancel that that stipend policy. So instead of paying paying out two thousand over the next four years, you would spend most of that upfront on a on a good quality business laptop.
One final question, Jeff. At the end of in the four years, if if someone has that same laptop and it becomes four years old and four years' time, we simply give it back to the town?
That's right.
Good. I'm happy.
So can I just speak on something that Cliff just spoke about, and that is, he's sitting there right now today with two two computers open. I expect you've got the go-to meeting screen on one and the agenda on the other. Is that what you're doing? Is anybody else using two screens today?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, and and that's what I was, that's what I was trying to do when I got caught up here a little while ago. I was trying to use this this iPad as my second screen because I think, um, you know, for those of us that like using the electronic um agenda as opposed to paper, um, you know, switch switching back and forth between your your go-to meeting window and your agenda window can be a little bit a little bit cumbersome. And so every other time I've been on one of these calls, I've had at least two screens in front of me. And and so that is, you know, to to your question about what do I do with, you know, I've I've got my personal device. I would suggest if you're sitting here or you're sitting at home connected to a meeting in the future, you would have your council laptop open and you would have your go-to meeting session happening on that. And if you want to have a second computer with your agenda and your documents on that, that's what you're doing now. And you've probably continued to do that, both at the table here as as you would if you were connecting remotely. One of the.
I just have.
Can I just offer one more thing is is that part of my thinking around this is in order to make a hybrid meeting work, we need to have um the people at a remotely experiencing the meeting very much the same as the people who would be sitting in this room, the room I'm sitting in. Uh, the best way to do that is essentially that we do one of these meetings where maybe five of us are all sitting in this room, but all of our microphones, cameras, and speakers are coming through the computer in the go-to platform. So we'll continue to use this platform for every meeting, even if we're all in the same room. And we'll get rid of these microphones on the desk and those cameras on the ceiling and the and the sound room over over there. Those will essentially be replaced by the components of the laptop computer that we provide you. So it's it's uh it's actually a simpler uh solution to the to the whole issue of how do we how well, how do we integrate a a live meeting with a virtual meeting? I think the answer is is that you always have, you're always having the virtual meeting so that people remotely can connect and have exactly the same experience. So that's so that's why I'm sitting here today, is I'm sitting in the room anticipating that if some of us were here in the room, how would this feel? And uh, I think I think it'll work. Uh, but it requires good equipment that we're we're in sure, we're sure is working and probably a lot of us will be sitting here with two screens.
Okay, we good? Anybody else?
I have one one final question, um, your worship. Jeff, uh, the go-to meeting or Zoom, if I was in the future, post um back in November, November first, could I have, will there be one screen in which I could zoom in and get the the people who are there at the meeting? And then on the other half of the screen, get the information necessary to to communicate back and forth in the meeting? You because because right now with the go-to meeting or Zoom, it occupies the whole screen and you can't split it. You have to have two. I use my phone to see you people and my iPad to look at the information.
Okay.
Okay, well, um.
Yeah, there's an answer to that.
Are are you? So what have you, Jim, if I may, are you using Apple products?
I am.
So so am I. I'm I'm using uh MacBook Air. Um, are you using iPad or MacBook?
iPad Pro.
Okay, so I'm not familiar with the iPad Pro, but the iPad, the iPad Mini, um, you can only have a full screen. You can't divide a screen. The MacBook uh works much like a Windows computer in that you can have separate windows for separate applications and you can actually split the screen. So.
That's all I need to hear.
Yeah, it's just about the iPad itself.
Yeah.
I just thought that, like, I don't know. Can't you just all tab?
You can do that.
Okay, so are we good? Any more questions, Steve?
So just one more thing, um, the opposite, I guess, of what counselor Wade and Cliff said, but uh some of us don't have three or ten laptops. Uh, I do have a couple myself, but I'm just thinking for the new people that, you know, may want to run or may be in. If I was a new counselor and didn't have a computer, I think it's important to provide. Uh, we did the same for our grade twelves at school this year and there's talk about doing the the same thing for for high school students. So it's important too to look out for people who who may not have the means to have three or four screens, right? And in that way, they're not behind the eight ball. So I think in fairness, that's important too.
Yeah, good point. I love the consistency. It's just.
Steve, Steve, we don't have three or four screens. What we're saying is we were paid to do it and we spent the money on the equipment. The town provided us with the money to do it.
For this for this council, though, every every council get you get a stipend, you get that check, right? So that'll start. We just won't get.
So anyway, it it really, I'm gonna stay out of it from now on because frankly, who knows where I'll be in October and that may apply to some others. So, um, you know, technology moves. The security things is it's like with Wade. Um, I don't know if it'll be any better, but at least the responsibility be off our shoulders if we go that way.
Good point.
Cross to your worship.
Okay, so who made the motion?
I'll make the motion. We accept the recommendation that is presented.
Okay, motion by counsel, deputy, second by counselor Don.
Yeah, question.
Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Um, downtown parking. I put it on, but didn't put anything with it. So I I guess the question is, Jeff, when are we gonna start enforcing downtown parking? Again, I think, I don't think I know. Um, we're getting the same issues as we had before. Uh, people parking, business, business workers and owners parking in front of the businesses again.
Jeff, I think there's a lot to uh with the construction work uh down here on Glebe Street. I've had uh two concerns from business owners. Uh, they are abusing it on Main Street, but I've heard it hasn't been too bad in the parking lots. I don't know if there's not many people coming down or they're using, I see a few extra cars at the at where the Zion Baptist Church was and I know they're using the parking lot behind the Grand Hotel a little bit because there's nobody in there right now and they're all using the parking lot across here uh that the grand owns, I think, uh, just off of Store Street. But two business owners have said they've had problems with somebody parking from eight thirty to four thirty in front of their business.
Yeah, so um, that is, that is the reason that we have downtown uh parking limits is that we want people to have free parking, not a parking meter, but we don't want people to stay there um all day. So that's why we do parking enforcement. Now, uh, we we laid off of that um when town hall was was not open to the public because it it made it complicated to get parking passes and to be doing enforcement, paying parking tickets and so on. So that's all past us.
Jeff, you can you do one without the other? Could you do the the Main Street enforcement and maybe at a later date start doing the parking passes again?
Yeah, I I don't see any reason we couldn't, uh, we couldn't take a phased approach. Uh, that might, that might.
I don't know how to. Thanks, Lindsay.
That might be the uh the right solution, Phil. You know, we're going to start digging up another section of Main Street and closing up this section in Glebe Street. Uh, hopefully next week, I understand pavement may be coming. And so we're gonna start going through the intersection and and down that that stretch of Main Street, which will will create other other uh issues, I guess, for those storefronts. But um, that's short-term pain, I guess, for long-term gain. So to answer your question, uh, we can, we can phase back in the uh the street enforcement. Uh, we'll have to provide the public with notification of that. And uh, if that's council's wish, um, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Okay, do you need anything from us?
Uh, just a general feeling that uh that you would support that. You think it's time to start doing that?
Yeah. Anybody disagree? Wade?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, when I see the green lights come on, I think you want to say something, so.
So what I would, what I propose, Mike is back, Mike is back on Monday and uh I'll get him working on a little bit of a campaign of awareness. And uh, let's say we'll give uh we'll give two weeks before we we drop the hammer. Maybe Sunny indicates some uh some warnings to people. Uh, the first couple of weeks, just to sort of heads up, people find things under the windshield wipers. They'll uh they'll become aware that this is coming back and hopefully we can solve the problem for people.
Good stuff.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, correspondence, previously distributed, there's nothing there really. Um, additions, uh, doctor recruitment. So uh, looks like Remo and doctor recruitment are in conflict every single time. So I I I spoke with counselor Jim and um he's willing to take my spot. Now, Steve, you're my.
All right.
All doctors.
So.
Alternative for doctors, yeah.
Yeah, so be, I mean, either you or Jim, it doesn't matter to me who wants to take it, but I'm gonna hand it off. So who wants it?
I'm okay. I've I've been attending the meetings all along, but not not set, but not able to make any decisions or recommendations.
Yeah, so are you okay with that, Steve? You can still fill in when he can't? So can I have a motion to uh replace me with counselor Jim?
So moved.
Okay, so Steve, second by counselor Don. Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Lindsay, would you make sure that um Patty and that whole team start getting everything to Jim? And to keep, keep uh Steve in the loop there? Um, okay, the next, the next one I added was the council motions. And um, I don't know if you've got it because I sent it after lunch, but the the article by Ellie Mina, and I think most most of us know who he is. He's an expert in uh parliamentary decorum, I guess you'd call it. So what I'm, what I would like to happen is going forward that when we when we put the motions in the minutes, that we don't put who moved it and who seconded it because they're not, they don't belong to those people. They belong to council. And um, there's, there's a whole page of reasons. If you want me to go through them, I have no problem doing that. But I I I think it's wrong to be putting the names in um for many different reasons. So uh, I'm looking, I'm. So I'm looking, I'm looking for someone to make a motion to record the motions in the minutes without the names attached.
I'll make the motion if you don't put my name down.
I got a question for Jeff though, afterwards, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, okay. Question?
Jeff, but they still record all nays, right?
If you ask for a nay, yeah.
If you ask for a nay, they'll record it?
Yes, yes.
And in fairness, anytime for council, for all of council, anytime anybody wants their vote recorded, you just have to say so.
Okay, yeah.
Right? That's fair. Okay, so moved and seconded, any more discussion on that one?
Your worship, I've, I've read it over and I'll have to read it over again. Gee, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. It just seems to, to initiate a discussion, we have to make a motion, right? So someone's gotta make a motion because you, then you need to second it for discussion purposes.
Yeah.
But so what if we'll be in for, if we're not gonna record the motion, are we gonna record any words or detail about the activities surrounding the motion?
All we're taking out, we're not, all we're taking out is moved by Phil, second by Jim. We're just gonna put moved and seconded.
So Your Worship, I think what you would say is that it was regularly, regularly moved and seconded?
Yes.
And then the motion would be there, that, council, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same thing, it just takes out Jim and Phil.
All right.
Yeah, exactly the same, because we have to record the motion, we have to record that it was made, that it was seconded, that was, you know, so it's the same thing without the names, which is fair. Okay? Anything else?
I'm okay. Have the boys, has everyone read the information that you sent out by email earlier this afternoon?
I've, I've heard this presentation before and I don't know if it's something we ever brought back, but it's something that I've always thought about is sometimes I'm gonna make, I'll use this one as an example, just thinking off of Worship's desk is a move that we accept, the video inspection condition survey for whatever. And it came from a company, I'll say from Lockport. And then somebody accosted me on Main Street, well, you made the motion that cut out a company from Yarmouth and why would you do that? But we wear these decisions as a council, not as an individual. I always thought about that, especially when Eli brought that up. It's been several years ago that he did it, but we wear, sometimes we wear decisions individually, especially when they're unanimous and they said, you brought up this or you seconded that. But even though the motion, even though it passed seven to nothing, some, some individual councils still could wear, where they should be wearing this as a whole council, not just as an individual.
But even when you seconded, how many times have I heard many of you say, I'll second that to get it on the floor for discussion? But when you, but when you put it in the motion like that, it makes it look like you're fully supportive and that's just not the case. So these belong to council. And I, I think, I just think thousand percent we need to make that change. So any more questions, Cliff?
So what, so we're, we're having another discussion about something that we haven't seen, Your Worship. I haven't seen it.
Okay, so you can move it.
We're having a discussion about something we haven't seen.
Yes, I understand. So what I said in the beginning of the meeting is if you're uncomfortable with that, then move it to the next committee of the whole.
Well, that's what I was thinking. I mean, I'm not trying to rain on the prey, but.
No, no, it's, that's, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
I'll withdraw the motion, Your Worship, we'll get it, put it on the next committee of the whole.
Okay.
All right.
All I'm thinking is, you know, you get a controversial issue and it ends up four or three, I think people would like to know who the heck vote, either way or the other.
This isn't about the vote.
That's, that's not about the vote. It's about in the minutes, it says moved by Phil.
All right, that's right.
And seconded by Phil.
Anyway, I'd like to see it before we vote on it, frankly.
Okay, so it's an email from me. When you go look for your emails.
Your Worship will take from this, maybe a motion to defer to the next committee of the whole.
Okay.
So moved.
Have a seconder?
Second, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, the next one is crosswalks. Just gotta, actually not one, I've had like three requests for a crosswalk, crossing Hibernia Street from Brunswick because of how many kids go to school. So what do we do with that? Send that off to?
Chad.
Are you gonna recommend?
We send the.
Traffic authority or?
Yeah. Traffic authority, look at the Hibernia Street, Forensic Street, crosswalk situation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on that one?
Question.
Jeff, what are you thinking? You good?
Yep.
Okay, questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, Main Street, was that you?
Yeah, maybe Jeff and Lindsay. Jeff, I know myself, Counselor Allen and Geese Red have been pointed to a subcommittee with the, out of the mayors and all the CEOs. I just maybe could get Lindsay to set up a meeting maybe next week with the appropriate staff to, to get this project underway.
Yeah, so the, I think the, yeah, for sure. And I've, I've been giving that, that work program a bit of thought, so at least I have something constructive to offer to the committee. So, yeah, as early as Monday would be fine by me, Lindsay. So whenever you can get folks together for a couple hours.
Yeah, afternoon, I think, and I think from what I understood, I think afternoon would be preferred for most of the people on that committee anyways, Jeff.
Perfect.
And I mean after 1 o'clock or something.
What, what is, in a few words, Jeff and Phil, what, what is the object or the project?
They are looking at restarting the YMCA building, getting that underway, what needs to be done.
No, Your Worship, sorry, Your Worship, that's, that's a step ahead of where the work has to start.
I know, yeah, but that's kind of the general idea.
Well, that's, that's one option and I think that we need to be clear that we're gonna look at, at all options. Yeah, so that, so that nobody's thoughts about what the bridge might look like are dismissed out of hand. I think we need to be fair and consider the, the thoughts and questions that others have brought. And so the, the scope of the work is a bit broader than just Main Street, but that, if that were, if that were the only scope, that's, there's a lot of work to be done there. So we need to get going.
Yeah, that's what I said, Jim, right? That's what I said.
Yeah, and we're doing the same, we're doing the same. Warden Anthony, Deputy Cunningham and myself are doing the same with, what did I say?
Warden.
I did not. Warden.
You did.
Warden.
You did.
Sorry, I'm all mixed up. Yeah, we're doing the same piece for the Mariner Center expansion. So, okay.
Just keep us informed.
Are you good? Do we need a motion?
We don't need a motion for that, Jeff.
Lindsay will send that out.
That's fine.
That's good.
Good, thank you. All right, additions in camera, so we're good. First of all, should we go in camera and then come out and do the council meeting?
Why don't you do the council meeting so that we can end the recording part and then we can go into the unrecorded in camera session?
Okay, go ahead, Cliff.
So for some reason, when you went to previously distributed, we passed right over the municipal report and financial indicator stuff, so.
Yes, we did.
We're gonna consider, when we gonna talk about it? If we're not talking about it now, if, if we just passed over, does that mean we're not gonna talk about it at some point in time or?
Go ahead, Jeff. Now, when it just says previously distributed, I assume that's just letters and stuff, but it isn't.
Yeah, so that I added to the agenda, we just got it. This is a report that the province puts out every year and it kind of describes our community in different ways and it describes our municipality and our financial performance through a number of metrics. I have in the past, in the lead up to our budget process, I've done a presentation to council that takes, sometimes it takes me close to an hour to present and answer questions. I didn't do that this year. So we can talk about this report if you've had a chance to look at it. If you'd like it flipped and do a presentation, I'd be happy to do that for you.
I just, Your Worship, I just wanted to make sure that we haven't finished with this because we only got it, well, I saw it for the first time today. And there's a lot, a lot of information in there, some, some, there are some negatives, but mostly positives, frankly. The town's writing.
Sometimes the negatives aren't apples to apples too, so we'll take a good, close look at them.
This isn't, all right, this isn't the time to, you know, try to defend it. There's, there's an opportunity to ask critical questions arising from this before we pass it over, that's all I'm trying to say. So we should make sure that it's on another agenda later on.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with you. I'm not defending it by any means because I don't like the indicators at all, but that's just me. Okay, so we're gonna get it on another agenda, Jeff?
Yes, sure, we'll put it on the next committee of the whole. If you'd like, I'll, I'll, I'll try and do a fairly quick presentation, but please read it and be prepared with your questions. And yeah, look forward to a good discussion on it.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, anything else? So, motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we can stop, oh no, we can keep recording. So I'm, we're now going into a council meeting, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We've got the record of attendance, no absent, no conflicts. And the agenda items are, are the two recommendations. So we'll start with, we'll start with the tender for RCS construction. Recommend award to RCS construction in the amount of 2.52950441, HST extra.
So moved.
I've, anonymous wishes to second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
And that included anonymous.
And the second order of business is the recommendation that the contract for the sewer cleaning be awarded to the lowest overall tender Loomer's pumping service.
Second. Oh, moved.
Who seconded it?
Steve.
Counselor Steve, any further discussion?
Question.
Question.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Anything else, Jeff, that we had to do today under that one?
Two in-camera items.
Okay, hey, motion to go in camera, folks.
So moved.
Okay.